Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move to approve tonight's agenda with the, as amended with the addition of six BMWVCOG Local Service Plan and Master Services Agreement.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The mo- um, the agenda is approved. Moving on to presentations, proclamations, and visitors. Tonight, we have the Corn Festival Princesses with Deanna Cox. Deanna, would you like to present? And make sure you talk into the mic so that we can hear.
Can I take it off the thing?
Does it come on?
Good. I'm Deanna Cox with the Director of the Corn Fest Princesses, and I brought them to introduce them to the City Council. First, we have Princess Emily. If she'll come up. Just stand right in the front of their honey. Princess Courtney. Junior Princess Eleanor. And Junior Princess Alondra. You girls now turn around and face them. This is your 2025 Corn Fest Princesses.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, Deanna, did you sew these dresses or these?
No, they bought them all this year. No, I gave that up.
Last year.
Last year, I did, no.
Thank you. Do we want to take a picture with council?
Yes, and I also have a gift for each one of them. I had to have a different, you could turn back around, girls. I had to have a different photographer this year, and he did a really good job. And he wanted me to present these photos. They're a 3D print of each girl. So. His name was Mike Mallory, and he was very generous to do those for us, so. Okay, if we could get a picture of the.
Do you girls just want to step back and we'll gather? Or do you guys, do you want us all in front?
It doesn't matter, whatever. They could step back.
Okay, let's all go in front. Here, girls.
And they're here to do a good job this year at Corn Fest, for you. Do you guys have any questions for them or anything?
I do know you guys are going to be in Staton's parade, yes. So, and they have invited me. I'm going to be there as well. So if anyone is going to be watching that parade, be on the lookout for them.
Want a big corn float or what?
Um, I think. I think it's, um, I forgot what their theme is this year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I got the dogs' costumes and ready. They're ready to go. All right, moving on, we have GSI staff presenting information on the well siting and water resources in Onslow. And is there a staff to present?
It's going to be a tough act to follow.
I know. How do you follow up princesses?
You can take your picture with me as well. Um, so my name is Matt Colebecker, and I am a hydrogeologist, so I kind of do water supply for my career. And I'm joined online by Zach, Ike Erlacher. Zach is involved in water rights, so I find the water, and he's the one that does all the permitting to give people the legal authorization to use it. So I've been working with the city for a few years now on some of the water supply challenges. And Matt had asked me to come down and give kind of a quick overview of what might be on the horizon in terms of options. That make sense? Okay. When we go to the next slide. Time myself here. Okay, so first, I am a geologist, so I'm going to have to talk a little bit about geology. And then we'll get right into some of the different options there are for water supplies. We're looking at some options to purchase existing water rights. There's something called aquifer storage and recovery that can be used. And then there's this intertie option that I think Matt could speak more to. But, okay, so moving on. All right, so we've got four aquifers in Onslow, all right? And if you would have come here about 20 million years ago, that purple one at the very bottom would have been a ground surface. And you would have been underwater quite a ways, too. So that's basically when, when this area was covered by an ocean, okay? And those are called the marine rocks. They're open to water rights. Getting a water right's not a problem, but they don't make a lot of water. So those are kind of off the table. So if we move up above those are the basalts. And those basalts, great aquifers, highly productive, love to put a well into those. But the problem there is there's no water available, so it's very difficult to get a water right. So again, we want the basalt, but no water rights available. Above that's some volcanic ash, as you can imagine, we can't get water out of that. And then above that, we have some real shallow sands and gravels that just aren't very productive. You can get the water rights, but not get a lot of water out of them. Okay, so when we're thinking about how to get water for Onslow, we're looking at those basalts. And that kind of gives us the couple of options that I'm going to talk about today. So the first thing we could do, because we can't get new water rights, is we can purchase an existing water right. And the costs, I have some of the costs involved in that. So there's typically like a $5,000 cost where you have to look and just see to make sure there are no fatal flaws with that water right. We've looked at this. We estimate that we're going to need about 134 acre feet. So what that basically means is the cost for water rights with going, with purchasing a water right at the going rate is going to be between 75,000 and 175,000. And that's just for the purchase. And then you would have to put a new well in, and that would go into basalt. Okay, so any questions about just in terms, does that make sense in terms of what buying a new water right looks like? Ken. Um, the state of Oregon has actually been making it very difficult to transfer water rights. And when we were first working on this a couple of months ago, we weren't even sure if that was going to be an option. Late breaking news about a week old is that there was a carve out in the most recent Senate bill that was passed that exempted municipalities from these kind of onerous requirements. So buying a water right is still on the, on the table, basically. Okay, so that's option one is buying a water right in order to access the basalt water. The second is called aquifer storage and recovery. I'm going to talk a little bit about what that is, but the take home message here is it's always going to be more expensive than just using a, a water right that you purchased from somebody else. So what aquifer storage and recovery does is basically there's plenty of water in the winter time, right? And so we'll take that water in the winter and we'll inject it into an aquifer. We'll store it there, and then we'll pull it back out during the summer when we need it. So that's another way to gain access to water. This is from the city of Prineville, so that's what they're doing up there. Next slide. Um, I guess the, the point here is we're, we're looking at that orange or peach shape there, that is a geologic unit called the Columbia River Basalts. And each of those blue dots is an aquifer storage and recovery project. So this aquifer is great for aquifer storage and recovery, and you also have that aquifer here in Onslow. So it looks like it would be an option. But like I say, the most important thing is it's going to be more expensive than just using an existing water right because there's additional reporting with the state, additional water quality sampling. Um, and also there, you have to actually put an application together that can be quite expensive for the state. So those are two options. And then I guess the final, and Matt will talk about this, is the intertie with Salem or Staton.
All right, thank you. Matt Atsul, Assistant Public Works Director. Just to talk a little bit about this, we've had some preliminary discussions with Salem and Staton just to see if these were even options available to the city. And they both are the Salem connection. We're not real sure where that would happen. Salem does have a water line that comes from Garren Island to Turner, and it's about a mile and a half out of town. The problem with that is there's not a lot of pressure. So in order to get that water into our reservoirs, we might have to build a pump station or, or do some more infrastructure work. It's not as simple as just tying onto the pipe and now we're, we're going. The city of Staton, I think the closest connection when I talked to them was Golf Club Road. So you have about three to five miles worth of pipeline that you would have to put in, which can be expensive. The other thing to think about is we wouldn't need this water during, during the winter. Kind of like he talked about with the ASRs, we would need it during the summer. And so you can't really leave that water sitting in the pipe, you know, for months on end and then just expect to be able to turn on a key and, and have that additional supply. So we would have to either come up with a system to flush that water, sample it, maybe chlorinate it before we could put it into use. Or we would have to receive a steady stream of that water like year round into our reservoir. So, um, the way that would work is, we kind of talked about it with the wastewater project is, you know, we would have to make a connection just like when a customer makes a connection to our system, there would probably be some SDCs and a fee. You know, there'd be a, a big water meter on it, and we would pay for that water. Um, we haven't done a cost analysis to see if that's cheaper than the ASR or drilling another well. That would probably be the next step, but we would want council's direction on that kind of. Is that the direction the council wants to go, or do we want to be independent and, and, you know, take another shot at, at a well? Knowing that it could be successful and it, it might not be successful. I think if we, we did the option that Matt talked about where we purchased a water right, the upfront cost is probably more expensive, but the, the rate of success would be a lot higher than what we, what we did for the Boone 3 well. And, you know, to kind of bring that up again is we had some of the, the water in that alluvial water right that was low-fearing, low-hanging fruit. We, we had a water right for it. All we had to do is go drill well, connect it to the system. Unfortunately, it didn't really work out that way, but as you saw in his slide, it's great water quality, low production. So that's, that's what we got with, with that well. Um, and that's kind of what we have to expect if we're going to try to do anything more in the alluvial. Another thing Matt and I have talked about is we have that water right available in the alluvial. We could drill a couple of alluvial wells that are 30, 40, 50 gallons a minute, and we could drill a basalt well and pump that water in and then pull it out at a higher rate during the summer months when, when we needed that higher rate of water. But again, the, as you probably are thinking in your heads, too, you're, you're pumping the water twice. You're having to do samples. You're having to regulate it more. So we're not really sure if that, that makes sense. But, um, the original, uh, the reason why we did this work is the original well siting study that we did really looked at that alluvial aquifer and, because we were trying to grab that low hanging fruit. And Matt and his team have kind of expanded that survey now to, hey, where, where are those basalt water rights that are in the 3, 4, 500 gallon a minute range that we could maybe speak with an owner about and say, hey, can we, would, would you be interested in selling this to the city? And Matt and his team came up with some, some costs. Unfortunately, it's not like going out and buying a car. You know, we have an idea of what maybe that would cost, but if, you know, someone really wants to hold on to that water right, and they have, and they think that it's valuable to their property, they may ask for a higher dollar. It's not like we can really get an appraised value on it and, and give them a, you know, a, a certain price for it. So there's, there's still a lot of uncertainty, but this kind of really gives us three main options of what we can do. And I'm sure Ron will want to have further discussions about this. This is just really preliminary, just so it's on your guys' minds, so you guys can think about it and kind of think about what, you know, the next steps might look like for getting that 300 or 400 gallons a minute more that we would need to make our system a little bit more robust. You guys have any, any questions for me or Matt?
I have lots of questions running through my head.
Okay.
I do have like, I don't, for me, it's more like about community, yeah. I guess my question's over the council, like when we talk about partnering up with Salem and Staton, then we lose control over the pricing. Is that, they, they would be setting the price.
Yeah, I mean, I think you would, you would negotiate, I think what other cities have done is they negotiate a, a rate. And, you know, you may have three, five, 10 years. I'm not sure. That may be something that, that Ron can talk more about. But, you know, there's other cities that they basically set a rate, and, and that's what, that's what they charge for a certain amount of time. And, um, and then just like our rates, you know, their cost of, of treatment and their, their cost and their distribution system, you know, will continue to go up with inflation and we'll, we would have to, you know, absorb that as well. I think it would be really important to really take a really close look at that contract if we ever decided to go that route. But, um, that route's probably like the least risky, you know? There's, there's water there. We can connect to it. We know that it's reliable and it's safe and it's all those things. But, um, but, you know, it's, it's kind of a, do you want to be tied to another community and, and.
One better than the other? Staton better than Salem or?
Uh, they both.
They run off the same one.
Yeah.
They run off the same one.
Yeah, so Staton, Salem, Turner. Turner hooked up to Salem. They run off this, they come off the Saniam. Another thing is like, we, when we think about the algae blooms that happen every year, we were not affected by that.
Right.
So, uh, that, yeah, that was really nice, but.
Yeah.
Isn't Staton concerned about water shortages themselves?
There, there is some possibility for, um, for some issues with water with Staton with the dam, the drawdown of the dam.
And I'm in meetings with that, like.
That is a concern that they have, but they also just lost their biggest producer, our biggest consumer, which was the cannery. And so they have a surplus of like 3 million gallons a day without that cannery operation going. And, you know, talking with the operators there, um, it's kind of, it's all, they're almost to the point where it's like difficult to operate at such a low flow, low rate because it's not really what their treatment plant was built for. So, you know, having, and they're doing, I believe they're doing an ASR project as well. So they're, they're looking at ways to try to, yeah, take some of that water and, and treat that extra capacity and then be able to pull it if there's an algae bloom or something like that, that they, that they have extra options to.
Do they cover some of the costs for laying the pipe, or is that all on us if we want to connect to them?
I think it would, it would probably be on us, yeah. We, we, it would be our cost to connect to their system.
Golf Club Road, Sid?
Yeah, the closest is Golf Club Road, but we haven't gone more than, hey, is the city of Staton interested? Yes, we could work something out. And, you know, they would probably want their engineer to look at the, I don't know. So there's Golf Club, and then they also have like the, um, they have kind of like an interchange between Staton and Sublimity. And there's some piping available there. So like, maybe that would be a cheap, cheaper route if we just went down, you know, an ODOT right away as opposed to trying to go down Milk Creek Road. You know, there, there may be some cost savings there, or that may be a better option, but we haven't looked, we haven't looked into it. The, the conversations have been really, really brief, really, hey, do you have water available to, you know, for another city? Yes. Okay. Would you be willing to make an intertie? Yes. Okay, we'll, 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 we'll look into it more later, so.
Timeline are we looking at before decisions need to be made?
Um, well, we have, um, we have a, an ask in the, the, the.
Three million.
Three million dollars. So this, it might be a decision that we would need to make if, if we did get that, that money. And hey, do we, what do we want to do? I know the ask was for three additional wells. You know, maybe that would be the, the time to, since it's kind of free money, maybe that would be the time to try the, try to purchase a water right and go on the basalt because it's less risky. Uh, we know the water's there. But, you know, that may cost a little bit more to the city because if you find a farmer that maybe wants to hold on to that right and wants, wants to charge a premium for it, you know, that might be something that, that we would have to absorb. But it would, it would give us our independence, I guess, and let us have our own system.
For me, what the concern is losing our independence and our, our local control.
Whoever owns it, as I do, I mean, and people aren't advertising.
No, we, we've done some, um, in the, in the GSI report, there's, um, there's some options like, hey, here's what's available in the basalts, uh, for, you know, three to five hundred gallons a minute. There was some that were more than that. And it'd basically be going and knocking on their door and saying, hey, are you interested in selling? Are, are you, are you still farming, um, uh, water crops? Maybe they're not, and maybe it's just sitting, and maybe it's, it's an easy, it's an easy decision for them. But we haven't, we haven't started any of those conversations. It's something that we, we could possibly do just to get some ideas, but.
What do you guys think? You're the experts.
I don't know that I'm the expert, but, I mean, if we wanted to, I think, um, talking with Matt, I think the, the basalt, buying a water right in the basalt and drilling a well, that, you know, that's what our system is. It's been kind of proven in Onslow. Boone 2 is in the basalts and the church wells in the basalts. Those are two highest producing wells. So we have some historical data there that we know that, that, that that's an option. It would just be a matter of, um, you know, finding another location that we don't affect those two wells. And, um, you know, hoping that it's still there, or, you know, maybe in the same area. Speaking on geology, it might change a little bit. It might be a little bit deeper. It might be a little bit shallower, but.
Yeah, I kind of see it as a trade off between cost and risk. So the intertie option is its chance of success is 100%. You're running a pipe and you're turning it on. With the well option, there's always some risk that it's not going to pan out. Uh, it's going to be probably less expensive. I think that's fair to say. I think there are other things to think about, like your independence you're mentioning. And I also think it's important to keep in mind not being able to get water out of, out of the basalts on the lower end of the risk, you know, side. But, um, yeah, it's kind of that risk cost chain, uh, trade off.
What do you think's the percent? Really, you said 100% with just turning the water? That makes sense, but what's the?
Yeah, I, I get that question all the time, and it's a great question. So way to answer that is I can't promise anything, but I can share what we did over the past year. So we put 15 wells in last year. And 13 of them were successful and met, you know, met the target. So I, I think that comes out to around 90%.
And like Matt was saying, that we tried to dig a well and it was not a viable well. And like, what, 50, less than 100 feet away, that there was a viable well.
Yeah, and, and part of that is, you know, it's so close to Boone 2, but we weren't in the same aquifer. You, you can really see the difference there because how close that well is to Boone 2 and just see the difference in production between Boone 2 and the alluvial well. Not being restricted to that alluvial layer. If we went deeper with that well, we could have hit probably great production in the basalt. But, but we were restricted to that area. And once you start seeing those soils that, that indicate that you're in the basalts, you have to stop. And that's, that's what we had to do. And if I remember right, as we were drilling that well, not a lot of water, not a lot of water. Started getting some water, started getting more water. We found out we were in the basalts. We had to back out a little ways. So, I mean, it, it's obviously there. It's just, um, we didn't have the water right for it, so we can't, we can't pump it.
Or anything about the, uh, basalts we, uh, in the basalt, we have to have a water right and it has to be transferred?
We have to have a water right for any of the water that we get. But we have some available water right, about 400 gallons a minute in the alluvial that we're not using because we can't find a home for it, because we can't find the production. So, um, if we found something in the, in the alluvial that was high producing as we were drilling a well, you know, that maybe would be an option to, you know, transfer those, those unused alluvial water rights. But, um, you know, having to go buy the, buy the basalt water right to transfer is the only way to get it out of the basalt.
The alluvials below the basalt? Above, yeah, above, okay.
Yeah.
If we have, if we buy more water rights, can we dig that well deeper into the basalts?
Yep. Yeah, you just wouldn't want to get into that, that, I don't know if you can go back to that. I think it was the second slide.
We wouldn't have to dig a new well. We could just dig that one deeper.
Yeah, yeah, so if you look, you know, it's not, this isn't like any specific area at Onslow. This is just kind of a visual, um, of, of the, of the layers. But yeah, you could, if you see like one of our wells is just barely into the basalts, and then you have one that goes almost all the way to the set, or to the more, to the marine rocks. You'd want to probably drill one closer to like that one that gets close to the, to the marine rocks. So you have more area to capture that water, more, more of a level to capture that water.
Because at least if we didn't get anything, we could back up and get at least what we had.
Right. Yeah, you have a, you have a lot more flexibility on, um, of, how, if you can keep going. If you, if you, if more production's happening, the, the more you drill, as long as you're staying in that basalt layer. Does that, does it, the further you get into the basalt, does that affect quality?
Yeah, I was wondering if, I mean, we start getting into the weeds here. The, the one thing you do have to watch out for as you get deeper into the basalt, you, the, the water can get saltier because of those marine rocks underneath. So you need to watch out for that. Sometimes we have to stop drilling early. But we know the, the shallow basalt's good, I think, because Boone 1 and 2 are in those shallower basals.
Yeah. Yeah.
And were you guys kind of pushing it both with the storage system and doing water rights?
I, I would, I would say like the city's first option, if we wanted to maintain a, a separate sys-water system would be to, um, to buy a water right in the basalt and drill a basalt well. And then, um, you know, the intertie thing, that's, that's kind of a policy decision. Like he said, it's 100%, but, and I'll back off of that a little bit. There's some chemistry issues that may need to be addressed as well because you're taking surface water and putting it with groundwater. So there, there may be some treatment stuff that we may need to adjust a little bit and do something different with. That would have to be analyzed, but, um, that would probably be like the next option. And then ASR is probably the most expensive, but it is an option. And, and that's kind of why, why we presented it. It's kind of like, here's the Ford Chevy and here's the Cadillac, you know, the, as cost wise.
It's only 100% unless they run short on water or raise the price to where we can.
True.
And, and if I could add to that quickly, I, I, I think the new well option is kind of your first step. It's your near term solution. You know, one thing about that basalt, if you look at it, it's all buried pretty deep underground. So it doesn't get a lot of new water coming in. And, uh, that's why Water Resources Department has restricted use of the basalt. So over the years, as the city grows, develops and pumps more from the basalt, you are probably going to start to see the water levels fall in the basalt. That's when you start looking at your ASR, your aquifer storage and recovery to artificially put water back in to help keep the water levels sustainable, basically. That's far off, um, you know, but that's, I just kind of throw that out there now.
So, uh, part of the ASR, you pump water back into the basalt?
Yes.
Okay.
So you would, what you would do is take. Yes. So you would, what you would do is take like the alluvial water. So just take Boone three thirty gallon per minute well, but if you pump it for a hundred and eighty days at that rate, that's a pretty good volume of water. So you put that into the basalt and then pull it back out during the summer.
And there's some restrictions. I don't know if we, we touched on it or not. There is some restrictions with, um, kind of, and maybe Zach had more information on this about how far out we can go to search for water rights. Like we can't call up someone in California or Washington or something and say, hey, we want to buy your water right. And, and transfer that here. I think there's, there's some restrictions on, on that.
Yeah. For, I mean, for example, you can't move that water right closer to a river. Um, so that's the kind of stuff in that five thousand dollar feasibility starting, when you're really starting to look at the specifics of that water rights purchase that you're kind of looking for those sorts of paid applause.
This is really just informational. We just wanted to paint a picture of, you know, here's where our wells are. That, those are, those are, uh, I believe some of the city wells, um, and kind of where they're located at and, and where the water is and, and what we, what we need to do in the future to, to secure some more water. But in the, the options council has to kind of direct staff on which, which route would you like to see, you know, would you like us to stay with our own and, and try to find a, a water right from, from someone and buy it and drill a well in the basalt? Or do we, do we take another shot at the, the, uh, alluvial, knowing that it might not be real successful? But if we got a grant or something, you know, maybe that, that's a shot that we take because it's, you know, not raising rates or, or doing something, um, that would affect the community. Um, but, but then again, there's, there's. Yeah.
With that grant asked, I mean, that application, I just, I don't know if we're going to get anything.
Yeah.
There was the day that I went to lobby for it, just the people that showed up. So that's not even counting people who didn't sign up. There was over two hundred and forty people signed up to speak. And then I had to go back. So, and the day that I went back just for, uh, Zoom attendees, there was over ninety.
Yeah.
So, uh, and they had let us know in, in that committee hearing that there's more asks than there are money available.
Yeah.
So we'll see.
Yeah. It's something to, to take a look at. Like, like I said, the, the report has, you know, some options for, um, some available water rights around us. It, it has a little bit more information about the ASR and the inner ties and, and the basalt, uh, well sightings. Uh, one thing to note too, that like we talked with Ron about, um, you know, you, you may hear about a residential well or something that's high producing, but they don't have to get a water right. And they, they're not stuck to, um, just pumping out of the alluvial or out of the basals. They can go wherever and kind of get what they want. And so we didn't include a lot of that information in the report because it's a little bit misleading. You know, you may see a two hundred gallon a minute well out on Bishop Road, but it may be in the basalt or, um, so it's, it's kind of hard to, um, correlate that with, uh, a municipal water right. That's going to have to have that water right. And, um, it's a little bit different than, than residential. So just keep that in mind. If, if you hear someone that says, hey, I've got a, you know, I've got a hundred gallon a minute well and okay, that's great, but it's not permitted in the basalt. We can't just go buy a residential well and, and convert it. So.
I think it'd be a good idea to plan for both situations, getting the money and not getting the money and seeing what our options are available at the time.
Yeah.
Ron is hand up.
Ron?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I think for us, we wanted to provide this background to get you thinking about, um, options. And, uh, my, my guess is if we are successful with the grant, that might elevate our timeline a little bit. Um, if we're not successful, uh, we'll still need to have these discussions and start to formulate a strategy. Uh, but, um, I, I do think ir- irrespective of, of what our ultimate plans are, it doesn't, doesn't really hurt us to open up conversations for, uh, owners of water rights that would fit within our basin. And at least start to explore that. It seems to me water is going to be a commodity that's going to get harder and harder to get. And even if we did choose other options, um, that, that may be part of that package. Um, so it might be a good idea to go ahead and initially, uh, start that work of exploring water rights. And then, um, and then certainly come back at a, uh, dedicated study session and talk a little bit more about what we uncover and, uh, maybe more details about, uh, the three options that we're talking about.
I think that would really give us an idea of where the cost is going to go. You know, if you talk to a couple of these folks that have water rights available and they're like, I want a million dollars for him. Well, now maybe that, maybe that changes our decision, um, on what we want to do. Um, but I think it's, it, like Ron said, it's a good place to start. So we kind of, we know what, what the cost it does look like. And if, if it's even an option, you know, they may say, I don't even, I don't, I don't want to even entertain a, a dollar amount. They're too important to my operation or, or my family or whatever it may be. So. Happy to answer any more questions.
I don't have any more questions at this time.
Alrighty. I don't think, I think those were all taken up when, when the, when the, the development was done. So. Yeah. Alrighty. Well, thank you and.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you.
Amen.
Okay. Are there any other visitors or in Zoom? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to pursue, prove the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to public hearings, uh, the council will now open the public hearing on item agenda for a resolution zero eight dash two, two, five, adopting capital improvement plans for water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation and park systems at seven thirty eight P M. Uh, we will now invite Steve, I'm going to pronounce your last name, Don- Donovan, to present the report.
Good evening, Mayor Counselor Steve Donovan, ninety six hundred Southwest Oak, Suite three, three, five, Portland, Oregon. I'm here tonight to give the staff report on the resolution before you for adoption of the capital improvement plans. This is a necessary and, uh, uh, important step prior to you being able to review and adopt new schedules of system development charges. So what we've been doing over the last several months, your entire staff frankly has been involved with Ron and, and Krista and, and Matt and, and your, your city engineer. We've gone through and we've culled and brought your capital improvement plans from your master plans to current conditions because you haven't really had a, a comprehensive review of your system development charges for quite some time. So we're kind of in a benefit situation here tonight is we're asking you to pass the capital improvement plan. That in itself is a benefit to your community. You now have plans. That's, it's a business plan. Think of it that way. It does not require, or does not cause you to automatically adopt the calculated system development charges. That will come later and we'll have a schedule to show you how that works. So all we're asking for is you approve the capital improvement plans at a future date in September. We will bring the SDCs to you. You can deliberate on those to adopt them as recommended, reduce them or not do them at all. So you're not bound by what we're doing. What I am going to show you tonight is what the implication on system development charges is for the capital improvement plans that we're asking you to approve. So next slide. There you go. So we'll talk about the policy issues. Some people, and I, I just want to give the old one oh one here, what is a system development charge? And how, how do you use them? We'll talk about your history of them in, in town here. One quick slide on that. Then we're going to loop through water, sewer, storm, transportation. Parks, we're not. Parks was done by separate, uh, you did your parks master plan two years ago now finished up?
Yeah.
Yeah. And those SDCs are, are, they're, they're forthcoming and they'll, they'll, they'll be ready. But they're not in my presentation tonight. Then we'll talk about schedule and then we'll get out of your hair. So go ahead. Next slide. So what you see here is who pays SDCs? Well, only development, new development pays SDCs. Your current rate payers or taxpayers do not pay them. They are a fee. They're charged at the time of permit issuance and they're, uh, consist of three components, a reimbursement fee for, uh, new, new customers that have to have tie into capacity that's already built. Uh, planned future capacity, which is the master plans that we're talking about tonight, and then a compliance fee. Uh, SDCs are, uh, a limited use type revenue under Oregon budget law. They are restricted revenues. They can only be used on capacity expanding capital improvements. They can't be spent on operations and maintenance and they, uh, uh, there's also reporting requirements on them. Uh, it's just basic fairness. If, if you're charging new development for new capacity, you better not be paying for, uh, uh, labor at the swimming pool sort of thing. Then the last one is the policy issues, and this is where you have all the, uh, flexibility as the elected body, uh, to impact, uh, how SDCs have an impact on how you develop and how you grow. The statute says we can calculate the maximum charge. It doesn't say you have to charge that. You can charge below that. You can charge nothing. So that just is in your, your toolbox going down the road. Next slide. Let's talk about where you are in terms of your history of, of system development charges. And in, just to let you know, the largest component of the system development charge is, is the planned future capacity. It's the future cost of projects. Like you all know, you're going to be building a new wastewater treatment plant that's going to cost you thirty million bucks. So these are huge costs and you have to take into account who's going to benefit from them. So from your master plans, the last vintage is water was two thousand fifteen, sewer, two thousand twenty-two, storm, pretty old, two thousand, streets, two thousand ten, and then parks, the two thousand twenty-four. Uh, your current SDCs, if I came in, I wanted to build a house in your town today, I would have to write you a check for twenty two thousand four eighty-three before I put a shovel of dirt in the ground. That's what your current SDC charges are. And yours, by the way, I've got a chart that'll show you in a minute. Yours are, are pretty affordable relative to your peers. Um, estimated population today is about forty-six hundred. In twenty years, it's going to be almost sixty-three hundred or a thirty-six percent increase. So there will be growth coming your way. And you, as an elected body, have to decide, do you want growth to pay for growth? And if you say no, we want to give growth a pass because we want to attract growth, that means your rate payers have to pay for that growth. So that's the trade off you have to consider there. And then finally, on the SDC methodology, you have, really haven't had a comprehensive review of your SDC methodologies for twenty years. And this update, which has been on your, your to-do list for quite some time, is part of a best practices for, for municipal governments. Go ahead. Next slide. So let's talk water. You're currently charged sixty-two hundred bucks. Based on the capital improvement plan and the analysis that we've done, you would be justified in increasing that to about seventy-seven hundred, seventy-seven sixty-nine, my old eyes see there. Uh, we started with the adopted master plan from two thousand fifteen. We, as the team here, went over each project in that master plans. We deleted projects that were already built. We looked at projects that had to be built and we had to look at any new projects that had to be done. And we brought the cost of those projects up to twenty, twenty-five dollars. And, uh, two projects that have a, a significant impact on the SDC are the new five hundred thousand gallon reservoir that's on your capital plan at one point six million. And the new booster pump that would be associated with, uh, uh, distribution. Next slide. Here is wastewater and as, as you would probably suspect with your large uh, wastewater treatment project coming on, uh, in, in, in the near future, your SDCs are already fairly high now at seventy-six hundred relative to your peers. We suggest that you could consider raising it up to ten thousand one hundred sixty-nine. And the real, the real big dog in this is the new sequencing batch reactor wastewater treatment plant. That's going to be twenty-five point two million and seventy-eight percent of it is SDC eligible. So that's what's really driving this, this fee. Uh, there's a new project in there and that's the, uh, uh, water reuse land purchase for three million dollars. Uh, because of your permit, the DEQ, you cannot discharge, uh, waters, treated wastewater to the, uh, any of the receiving borders in the summertime. They have to have store it and you use spray irrigation to, uh, uh, discharge that water. Next slide. Stormwater, very modest. Uh, you have no stormwater SDC now. We're suggesting based on the capital plan that Matt really did a lot of hard work on to bring us up to current two hundred fifty-eight bucks. So you would, you're very low, well, you're nothing now. You would still be the lowest in your peers. My suggestion is you've got a two thousand master plan. I mean, that's old and most of the projects that are on that master plan have either been built or are still in, in a, in a holding pattern. It would be in your benefit to somewhere down the road, commission a new stormwater master plan and get a better feel for what conditions are now. Because over twenty-five years, your, your hydrology has changed. So, uh, next slide. Uh, transportation, Ron and I worked quite a bit, uh, on this one and, uh, actually I like your two thousand ten tr- transportation system plan. It's, it's really well, well done for its vintage. Uh, you currently charge fifty-two hundred bucks. We think you could get that up to sixty-one hundred. So you're effectively a modest increase on transportation. Uh, we brought all the costs of the projects up. One key difference that we've had, uh, uh, a big conversation that staff is, uh, creating a new Delmar street through constructing new street. That street was on the, uh, transportation system plan as developer funded. And, uh, we've come to the conclusion that that should probably be on the city's dime to build it and make it SDC eligible. So that's, that's what's different relative to the two thousand ten T S P. Uh, next slide. This is parks. Now, once again, the actual number that's going to come out will be forthcoming soon. You currently charge thirty-three hundred bucks. Uh, the consultant that did your, your master plan did provide us with the capital improvement plan. So that's going to be included in your reservoir or in your resolution tonight. And you can be, uh, referred to that master plan. I know you've been involved in it. So next slide. Here is the, the bottom line. Like I told you before earlier, you currently charge twenty-two thousand four hundred eighty-three. With everything except parks, we think you could charge twenty-seven six fifty-nine and be justified in that, that number. You would still be in the middle of the pack. And by the way, I'm working for a number of these communities that are on that list. They'll be raising their SDCs here. Uh, come July or August, uh, uh, Staten, uh, they're going to have a fairly substantial increase on their, on their wastewater SDC. Sublimity, we're working on theirs right now. Uh, Canby, uh, they are working on theirs also. Uh, Silverton, why I'm working right there now with them, they're going to be raising their parks and their water. Parks fairly substantially. So cold comfort to you folks, but those bars are increasing. Go ahead. Next slide. So here's what the schedule is looking like for us to come back to you. And once again, tonight was a critical point. We can't even start talking about changing SDCs until you have an approved capital improvement plan by resolution or ordinance. You're going to have resolution twenty-five oh eight tonight. That will suffice that. Uh, we have made written notice to the Home Builders Association of, uh, of our pending, uh, let me take a step back. Under the statute, there is a statutory compliance period, which is ninety days. So think about, uh, was that two weeks ago or a week ago?
Week ago.
Week ago, we, we, we dropped the ninety day flag. So ninety days prior to first reading, uh, uh, by resolution or ordinance, we have to notify people in writing on your list. We know that the Home Builders Association of Polk Marion is interested, so we've notified them. Uh, did, was there any other builders? Uh, did, was there any other builders?
Uh, I didn't have any on our list, but I did send to uh, Tom Yummins and um, Jerry Flowers as well.
Okay, so.
In case.
That's the start of the outreach there. On July twenty-third, honor before, by the way, the report is already drafted. Uh, the draft methodology will be available for inspection. It'll be posted at the city's website. And then September twenty-second is when we'll have another resolution for your consideration with a staff recommendation for the SDCs. That would be in that twenty-seven thousand range-ish, whatever the parks comes in at. At that point, you have three choices. You can adopt the resolution that will present as submitted. You could send the resolution back. We call it remand the resolution back to staff for curative action based on staff on council recommendation. Or you could vote no. And you would just stay with what you've got. So those are the three choices in September that we'll bring to you. That is the end of my story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Lots of useful information.
Build any houses there anymore?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And uh, Wilsonville, their total SDCs is, is fifty thousand bucks before you put a shovel of dirt in the ground. And in, in Washington County where I live, uh, I've got some that are bumping their head on sixty thousand dollars now. You wanna build a house in San Francisco, it's a hundred thousand dollars. So. But this ain't San Francisco.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Hey, uh, there are no one in Zoom or in the audience for comments on the public hearing? Does staff have any additional comments? Uh, I will now close the public hearing at seven fifty-two PM and move on to council deliberations. Does council wish to deliberate on the public hearing? Being that there is no deliberation, we'll move on to a motion. Is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution zero eight dash two-five, adopting capital improvement plans for the city of Almsoil's water, wastewater, stormwater, transportation and park systems as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. It's, uh, moving on to old business. We have no old business this evening. Uh, number six, new business. Um, agenda item six A, business organ grant agreement. We will now invite staff to provide the information.
Hope you guys don't mind if I say this.
Okay. Christie's gonna be, uh, Percy's gonna be writing.
Uh, so, uh, I'm sure you guys remember, we uh, were awarded five million dollars in the state budget a couple of years ago uh, for the wastewater project. And then last year we got another four. Um, so this grant agreement is for that nine million dollars total. Uh, and it's gonna be through, funded through Oregon lottery bonds, which means those bonds have to be sold first, which that's all been done. So that's what this agreement is for. It, those bonds have been sold, so it's ready to be moved on. Um, so once we have your approval, we'll have that signed. And then there's also a signature card. Um, I've just included Ron and Josh, our finance officer on there. Um, and yeah, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer this.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the grant agreement with Oregon Business Development Department for the wastewater plant construction sewer system improvement project contingent on approval from the city attorney as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to agenda, agenda item six B, the MWV COG agreement. We will now invite staff to provide information.
Uh, so, uh, if you guys don't remember, this was initially on the agenda for the last meeting. We did hold off on that because we were having the lawyers review it. Um, they have done that and they did suggest removing uh, a sentence from the limited warranty. Uh, the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments was held back for a minute, but they did agree to have us just remove that and sign it and send it back. So we have removed that sentence. So uh, section ten limited warranty now just has the one sentence and um, it's approved by the lawyer. So if you guys prove it, then we will go ahead and have it signed and sent back to them.
Are there any questions or deliberation on this? No. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the local service plan and master services agreement with the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Governments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to number seven, city administrator report. Uh, Ron, are you reporting tonight?
Uh, I don't have a, a, a lengthy report. I just really have one item. I was gonna do in good of the order, but I'll, I'll do it here if that's okay.
That's fine.
Uh, we received some correspondence from Marion County uh, related to the Materials Management Advisory Council, and I believe I sent this along to council. Uh, this correspondence. Basically, it's, it's a new advisory council. Um, they're asking for a representative uh, from our jurisdiction uh, to participate in that advisory council. Now, it's not an authority council, but that's not uncommon for waste management. Um, uh, but it does give us a seat at the table. It may or may not be interesting to a council member who wants to take on that tour of duty, but um, their first meeting is in July, so this would be a good opportunity for uh, someone to volunteer or be appointed uh, that, that's interested in um, the uh, Materials Management Council.
Does it have to be a council member or can it be a staff, a city staff member?
Uh, they specifically asked for an elected. Uh, and I, I didn't question it if it could be, if there could be an alternative, but that was their, their specific requirement.
Can't elect Matt?
Is there any volunteers?
But when did the information come out?
I don't remember seeing that.
I don't remember seeing it either.
Uh, well, I just got it last week. I thought I forwarded the email along to you guys. Perhaps I didn't. Uh, and I mean, we don't have to appoint tonight if there's no takers. Uh, I suppose we just wouldn't be at the first meeting, but that's not unusual.
How often do they meet, Ron?
Yeah, what's the schedule?
Uh, let's see, da, da, da. So the first meeting is Wednesday, that July twenty-third from five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Are those in person or hybrid?
It's in person.
They're on, I'm assuming, where are they meeting?
Probably at fifty-one, fifty.
You know, they got some information on here. I'll, I'll tell you what. I, I think what we could do is we could
I. For that, oh, sorry. I'm yelling into the mic. Oh, my goodness. Uh, for that first meeting, I can attend and then we can see if council has availability to go. Um.
If he sends us the information and we can look at it, we could talk about it at the next meeting too.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that. I'll, I'll, I'll forward the information to you. There's actually an application they want the selected member to fill out.
Okay.
Um, and uh, I'm not really sure of the entire scope that they're gonna cover with this. Uh, they didn't give me a lot of detail, but the bylaws are there. They're fairly short. And you could read those and, and um, yeah, I think Della's right. I think we do have time to do an appointment at the next meeting, actually.
Okay.
It actually doesn't state a specific uh, location for the meetings regularly. It says it'll be posted on the agenda, so.
Alright. Let's go ahead and do that, Ron. Just go ahead and send it out and then we'll decide at the next meeting.
Alright, we'll get it out to you first thing in the morning.
Alright. Is there anything else?
That's it.
Alright, moving on to mayor and councillor reports. Does anyone have anything to report?
I'll have to wait till next month.
Okay. We have superhero carnival coming up. Um, I think that's the only thing. Eight, on the twenty-eighth, yeah.
Uh, I also meant, sorry, I meant to mention this a second ago. The grand marshal vote came in. Um, so Ted Shepard is his tenth anniversary from his last one. And so he's gonna be our grand marshal for this year's sport festival, right?
He doesn't get out of having to bag corn though, does he?
Oh, absolutely not. He loves that. He would never miss it.
He's a hard worker.
Alright. That's good to hear. Um, anything for good of the order? Anyone have anything new that they would like to bring up? Alright. Um, if there's nothing else, the correspondence, um, it says there's no correspondence in the packets. Um, we have no executive session, so we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight oh one PM.